Good morning, everybody. It is April, or no, we're in May now, May 2nd, 10:00 AM. A meeting for the Bellingham Board of Selectmen. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. As a matter of attendance, I'll take a quick roll call. Dan Spencer is present, Michael Connor.
Yeah.
Don Martinez.
Here.
Cynthia McNulty.
Here.
And Bob Biaggi is shopping for a car. He's here.
Yeah, well, the wife is here.
Also in attendance with us is our administrative Dennis Frame, our selectman, administrative assistant, Laurie Alley, and looks like a whole group more. Senator Ryan Fatman, and I believe Rep. Soder on, on call with us? If not, he should be shortly. All right, so before we kick things off, other than what we're going to open up first with the request of our CFO, this is more going to be a kind of a, a, a roundtable discussion with regards to opening up businesses in the town of Bellingham. I know we've had one-on-one discussions with each other as far as the board goes, but there's been no formal discussion, so I kind of just want to get something on the record with regards to, you know, what our thoughts and intents would be. That being said, our CFO Mary McKinnon did send over a housekeeping item that we could vote on. It's regarding debt to spending regarding the COVID emergency. Currently, we're charging COVID costs, the operating budget, and grant funding, but she would like us to take a vote as a preemptory action to ensure that there is no operation, like interruption in operations. So does anyone have the motion that Mary had sent over, requested? Well, I do. So she is looking for a motion that the town would authorize the CFO to request spending in excess of appropriations required by the Department of Revenue from Bulletin 2020-01. I guess who to make that motion. All right, Martinez is the first. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McNulty. Any further discussion? Okay, airing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Mary, do you want to just touch on that and kind of give a little more elaboration to it? I'm muted.
Hang on, am I muted? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We can.
Fantastic. So thank you for taking that action. This is just simply a preemptory action. The Department of Revenue had sent out a bulletin letting all communities know that in order for us to spend in excess of appropriations, we need to be on record and have a written approval from the Director of Accounts at the Department of Revenue. We are currently not spending in excess of appropriations. We, we are incurring expenses related to COVID-19. However, we are currently charging our operating budget and we have received some grant funding. We are also in the process of collecting our documentation to submit for FEMA reimbursement. So we have some other options. However, it was brought to my attention this week that every community is required to have this request on file with the Department of Revenue. Therefore, I brought it before you guys. If we find ourselves that we are in a position where we are spending in excess of appropriations, I will certainly make this board aware of it, but we have not faced that at this point.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
All right. So as I stated, it's going to be more of a roundtable discussion. I believe that's probably the only thing that we'll be taking a vote on this morning. I do want to thank everyone for taking the time out of what appears to be our first real day of spring since spring has sprung, and we'll try to facilitate this as quickly as possible. So people can get out there and get their vitamin D. So I just like to start off, and if my colleagues will indulge me for a bit, they've heard me kind of go on a little rant some of our 9:00 AM meetings regarding this issue. So I'm just going to talk about it real quick and then ask for everyone's thoughts. So currently, I'm going to start off like Mark usually does with numbers. All right, so nationwide, we are at 30.3 million unemployment claims in the last six weeks. 3.9 million of those claims came in in the last seven days. Statewide, we're at 724,000 unemployment claims in the last six weeks, and in this last week, there were 71,000 new claims. Obviously, that's an issue. The governor put out his executive order limiting who and, who and what can do business, and it's very restrictive, and he has classifications of essential businesses and non-essential businesses. I, I, I kind of really hate that term because I would like the governor to come out to some of these small businesses in Bellingham and tell them that what they've sunk their life savings in and worked their whole life for is not essential. However, it is what it is, and we have to abide by that, that order. There are some businesses that are in the gray areas. There are some businesses in town that are shut down right now. However, the services that they provide are being provided by an outside vendor, be it the nationwide, big corporation, or, or some type of mobile or online businesses. So they kind of fall in the gray area because their business may have been deemed non-essential, but their services aren't. So those are the ones I kind of want to focus on today. There are specific businesses that I was hoping to look at, such as golf courses. And it was my hopes that we could do today and get those golf courses open, not only for the sake of the golf course owners to try to survive and generate some revenue, but also for the mental health aspect of this crisis. We have healthcare providers and frontline responders who are doing their best to treat people and save their lives in the immediate, you know, 14 to 30 days. But I think we also need to look at what's going to happen six months from now, what's going to happen a year from now, when these businesses that were not allowed to operate are shut down. And people, you know, who've been kind of confined to their houses except for their trip to the grocery stores or their trips to Home Depot, that's the only kind of outdoor time they're getting, which is why when I look at a golf course, and trust me, it's not because of the game that I play, but people could get out and just get some open air. Golfing to me is the ultimate social distance sport, especially if you play with me. I don't understand why the governor refuses to look at golf courses and open them up. All our neighboring states are pretty much open. I know Rhode Island's open. Rhode Island, Connecticut is open. I'm sure it's opening. Maine is opening. Yesterday, New Jersey has opened, or is opening soon. It just baffles me. That being said, when we're looking at direct violations of specified businesses that the governor has put in place, if we lie in the face of that, we're not only putting the town in jeopardy with regards to financial implications, we may be putting those businesses, should they choose to open on our request or our allowance, we may be putting them in financial jeopardy with regards to penalties or fines. So unfortunately, certain businesses that the governor has specifically spoke of, I don't think it's going to be within our curfew to take a look at. We have formed a committee, the Economic Development Committee, that meets on Tuesdays at 10:30 AM. Myself and Cindy are representative of the Board of Selectmen. We also have a planning board member, a Board of Health member, and a member of the business community. So we're taking a look at those businesses that are kind of in the gray area. I know there's been requests for worship places of worship to be opened. Again, those are specifically designated in the order, governor's order, under the no gatherings of more than 10 people provision. So again, one of those situations that if we say as a town, sure, go ahead and do it, even if they're probably, you know, practicing proper social distancing, wearing the proper PPE, again, it could be something that could put the town at risk for financial implications with as far as grant funding presently and in the future, and those houses are worth it. So certain places we won't be able to touch, unfortunately. And hopefully, come May 18th, the governor doesn't choose to kind of move the goalposts once again and extend this, and is actually taking actions to start opening and allowing some businesses that can operate safely within the standard of CDC protocol to open. But me personally, I mean, I, the way he's talking, it sounds like he's setting up the foundation to extend this for God knows how long. So that being said, I'll jump off my soapbox here, and I'll just kind of go around the table. And I know Senator Fatman, you've got some, some things going on here, so you only get to about 10:30. So what I'll do is I'll kind of open up comments from Senator Fatman, Rep. Soder, and then just go around the board as far as thoughts and comments from my colleagues. So Senator Fatman, if you can kind of touch on what your feelings are, and let me know if I'm probably on the right line of thinking as far as financial jeopardy if we go against the governor's, governor's direct order.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, and good morning, everyone. I apologize that I have to get off a little bit early today. Yesterday was my son's second birthday, and today we've got one of those family parades coming through around 10:30 to cause havoc in our neighborhood, I guess. But, you know, speaking of havoc, what we're all going through, you know, I, I think to step back, Dan, you started looking aggregate at unemployment numbers and nationwide. When we look at Massachusetts, you know, there's about 900,000 of our neighbors who are unemployed right now, and it's going to get worse, unfortunately. And, and the reason why I say that is Mike and I, just by nature of our position, are on calls all the time. One of the phone calls I've had regularly is with medical institutions. And right now, while it's not really being discussed too greatly, there's been a lot of assistance from the federal government. These hospitals are ham-tied because they don't have the ability to do any elective surgeries, which is how they make and generate all their revenue. And so a lot of community hospitals are furloughing their employees right now. But if there's no guidance to open up those elective surgeries, this is going to be a significant problem for the hospitals and the revenue, and they're going to start laying off people. And, you know, that, those are some of the largest employers in the community. So they haven't been touched. Government hasn't really been touched yet, and that's going to happen. Some of the towns in the western side of my district just started furloughing some of their support staff employees. And so, you know, the next step after furlough is, is to lay them off. So this is going to get worse. I spoke to the Pioneer Institute. They had come out two or three weeks ago with an analysis saying that they thought that unemployment could get to 24%. I have a friend that works over there. I called him and I said, "That's awfully high. We've never been there." And they said, "You know, we think it's the worst-case scenario." Oh, we're there now. And so they were clearly ahead of the curve a bit, but they were actually wrong when you consider the fact that they thought it was worst-case scenario. You know, there's a significant revenue problem with all of this. You know, we know we lose $100 million a month when it comes to hotels alone being closed. I'm sorry, meals, restaurants, meals tax. You know, $1.2 billion we expect to not collect with corporate withholdings, income tax. So it's a, it's a pretty dire situation. One of the things that I've been telling a lot of businesses that Mike and I represent and that I represent beyond sort of the Eighth Wester District is get ready to have a business plan. Do it now. If you haven't been doing it, a lot of these businesses have been putting together plans in anticipation, you know, to submit to the governor and getting them to their local chambers of commerce. Every Friday at 1:00 PM, the local chambers of commerce have a conference call with Secretary Ceneley, and they're allowed to advocate or discuss any sort of situations that they see. One of the things that's been happening for the last two weeks is giving insight into what they should open, i.e. the golf courses, pet groomers, the florists, those that, you know, there's social distancing components that can be executed but still operate their business without a problem. And so those are things that I think are really important. You know, one of the things Mike and I have been working on just recently was trying to work to get the mend and drive-in in a position where they're open and advocate for them. They employ hundreds of people throughout their seasonal opportunity to make, you know, money and provide movies to people in our area. And, you know, Dave Edelman has been running commercials about the restaurant industry, but also, you know, advocating largely with op-eds and whatnot for the drive-in. There's not a lot in Massachusetts, but, you know, they feel very strongly that they can put themselves in a position where everyone would be safe to the fullest extent. And so, you know, we've been turning that around and submitting it to the, you know, Lieutenant Governor Polito and Mike Ceneley and Commissioner Burrell, who are heading up this reopening committee. You know, the, the one thing I would express that's somewhat disappointing to me personally, because, you know, I know a lot of people who are unemployed and, yeah, have been really impacted by this, is that I think that they should have put this committee together March 24th. That's the day that the governor said, "Hey, we're, we're going to have an essential list of businesses." I don't understand why they didn't do that. But, you know, in the reality that we're living in, I think that towns, based on what the Attorney General has said, have some wiggle room and should be in a position to accept business plans, review those plans, and then turn around when the appropriate time comes and say, "Yeah, you know, we feel comfortable with you being open." And we're going to advocate for that, too. You know, at some point, the amount of economic suffering is going to be real great. You know, at the end of June, the federal benefits that are being sent to people, the $600 a week that they run out. So that's something we have to be really mindful of. And obviously, Mike and I are going to do everything we can to make sure that Bellingham is in the best position with regards to any sort of support in doing that, you know, from grant level, you know, for mass works or whatever, you know, making sure that that money is retained and your town is supported, to making sure that the business community is supported. And that last thing, two last things I'd say, I know the Bellingham Business Association has been involved in this committee that you put together. They're not on that phone call that happens at 1:00 PM on Fridays with the chambers of commerce. We need to get them on that call, and we can make that happen. And then second, you know, I see some balloons in the background of Dennis Frame, and I gotta say, happy birthday, I think. You know, it's, it's a strange time to have a birthday, but, you know, God bless you. And let's look forward to the next one when you can have a little bit more fun, right?
Excellent. Thank you, Senator. Rep. Soder.
Thank you, Senator, and I appreciate everything. And it's great that Senator Fatman is there in the leadership role that he's in, in the Senate, because he constantly keeps me updated because he, he has to be there a lot more than I do in his position and his role as, in the minority leadership. So he's, and the fact that he's on House Ways and Means, which is a very important piece for us, you know, and discussing the financial outlook from where we go from here. I will say, and I just, one of the things I want to piggyback on with the Senator, and one of the things we talk about, him and I talk about every day, is, you know, when the actual release of what the plan is going to be moving forward, I think you guys are going to have a responsibility in that factor of watching out for what businesses and in following guidelines. And, and the one thing, if you accomplish anything out of today's roundtable, would be to really start from an economic development standpoint for the town, start receiving those plans with the current guidelines as they are today. Because I've got a feeling what's going to happen is the current guidelines are going to be used to some degree, and they'll be adjusted accordingly as we move forward and open. My fear is, is that what's going to happen is you're going to have such an influx of people coming to you to open, and you're going to have to get through them quickly. So this would be a great time to stop building upon what their plans are. And then as we get from the governor, the kind of a release here, even if it is May 18th to some degree, and then June 1st or whatever, and again, Senator and I don't know, we don't try to guess this anymore because we think we know, and then all of a sudden, it changes. So I would suggest that you start having businesses come before you with plans on how they would move forward. Restaurants might be a little bit more complicated only because I don't know exactly from where they are, where they are now to where they will be. It's my hope that when they move forward, those that have outdoor patios and things like that can do, have some sort of sense of outdoor presence to it, can separate more, can have the social distancing guidelines and things like that implemented. That would be actually a great way to kind of segment back into things. But, you know, we got to trust that the roundtable that the governor's put together and of executive leaders and some public officials, that he, he sees that, and I'm, I'm sure he does. So I, I, you know, from that standpoint, I apologize for that. I stand, from that standpoint, I think that, that would be something that I think you need to come up with out of this discussion today would be a great way to start. That I've had those conversations with a couple of the other towns also. You know, that being Uxbridge. Uxbridge is, you know, roughly, you know, probably has about, you know, not as much industry as you do, but, you know, they're looking at ways to say, "Okay, we had this conversation with their Board of Health." Same thing. It's, you know, stop preparing because you are going, once it hap, once it happens, you're going to be bull rushed with a lot of stuff. So my feeling on it would be to really start that process. I think, you know, I, I feel the frustration on the golf courses. The Senator and I have brought it up constantly, and I think the governor made it very clear he's not budgeting on it. So in, in, you know, that's where we are from that standpoint. So, but, you know, there are, there are some things that we, you know, we get it. We understand the frustration that everybody has. I haven't had a haircut in eight weeks, so I know what that frustration is. But, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're working it. I, I think the mend and plan from the Edelman Brothers is something that the Senator and I, he just mentioned that we signed on to. I got to tell you, very well thought out, very smart business plan to adjust to the times in the times that we're in. It's actually a breath of fresh air to see that, that people are taking that time and being innovative on how they're going to move forward with their plans. So I think that would be, and we could share that, I'm sure that's something we can share very easily with them, Ryan, on what that plan is. So if you haven't seen it yet, you know, I think it would be a great way to do graduations in the area for those that have seniors graduating and still being, having a great part of it. They have a great plan for that. And I know, you know, that's been a big thing. The other, the other thing that the Senator and I are trying to work on is a lot of this other consumer stuff that is out there. There's a lot of questions about trips and things like that that we're getting that, you know, I know that you guys are all dealing with, and were, or school trips and things like that that people paid for and companies were running, and we're trying to look into all that. It's kind of one of those tough situations, and we're trying to support all the school departments in our districts with those needs. And, you know, we're trying to work through that because I know that's a little bit of a touchy subject also. So, but I think if anything comes out of today, definitely start your economic plan to get back in, into the swing of things here. People need a means to the end. You know, I keep saying that. People want to see the light at the end of the tunnel. They want to see their sacrifice pay off. And I think by us doing that, but, you know, guys, the numbers are, from a statewide standpoint, not in this area. Statewide standpoint, we still need to see a little bit more coming down to feel comfortable where we're at, and nobody wants to go back, backwards. We want to go forward here. And, and, you know, I think the Senator and I feel it, and we talk about it constantly, him and I, on how we can move forward and get things moving again. Because the unemployment claims between his office and my office, and he's got 14, just my four alone, is crazy, and dealing with the hospitals that he has in his district. This is going to get worse because there is going to be a sense of layoffs, and there are a few towns in the area that are already starting to lay off people. So, you know, it, it's just not going to get any better if we don't figure out a way to do it because we can't, we can't let the virus consume our lives and we can't go into hiding forever. So we have to figure out a way forward that we can move forward and still operate. So, and get our mental health back, too. I think that's a huge, huge problem right now. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Rep. Soder, and you'll be happy to know that we are entering our second week into our economic committee, committee plan here that we are doing just that. We are soliciting business plans to, again, to even get them open in the intermediate timeframe, if they can do so in a smart, safe way. So we definitely, definitely got that going here. And, and again, I'm going to say one last thing, and I'm going to get to my colleagues. I've talked too much today. I, I think frustration that we have is the fact that the governor is painting the entire Commonwealth with one broad brush stroke. What's happening in Somerville is certainly not what's happening in Bellingham, and we can't be treated the same. I think that's where the frustration lies with me, and I'm sure with some other folks there. That being said, I'm stepping off the soapbox like I told you I was going to do minutes ago. Mr. Connor, what do you have?
So just to clarify, either Ryan or Mike, did not the governor kick it to Gara Polito, the golf situation, and some of the other businesses? I thought that she was meeting this weekend with them.
Yeah, if I, if I'll just chime in here, then I'll let the Senator. Personally, I saw that yesterday, and what my feeling is on that, I think he's got a sense of frustration, and I think I wouldn't be shocked if the committee, he punts it to the committee for the committee to come with a recommendation. And the Senator, I mean, he can chime in on here, but I think, you know, politics is also playing a lot into all of this, everywhere, nationally, locally, statewide, everywhere. So I, I, I do think, I think it was his way of saying, "All right, guys, I'm addressing this," but didn't want to give in. I know, Senator, you, you, you've been around long enough to see it. But that, that was my read-between-the-line type thing on it. I think that, I think that's something they're going to address because I know they're getting bombarded with it. It's not just from us. It's from the other side, too, which they have a bigger majority than we do. So, but I'll let the Senator chime in if he has anything to add on that.
Um, yeah, so that's definitely happening, Mike. You know, part, part of that started with a question from the media, and I thought part of the response was a little frustrating. That's an interesting idea. You know, yes, it is. It could be a very good idea, too. But, um, yes, I think that the committee, the governor is going to rely heavily on the committee. The High Tech Council, which is, you know, sort of a, a large business interest in the state, did put together their initial report on how they think the state should open up. It's a slow trickle. When we look at what other states are doing, I know that the committee is tasked with looking at best practices over there. As Mike, as Dan outlined, you know, there's a lot of, right now, there's a lot of businesses that are golf courses, groomers, drive-ins that are already open throughout New England. They're opening either this weekend or early next week as part of their gradual process. I think our committee is going to be looking at those best practices and hopefully implementing some of those things. I also think, you know, one of the things we have to recognize about Massachusetts that's different than a lot of places in the nation is that we are a Commonwealth, not a state. You know, people are like, "Oh, what's the difference?" You know, we have a lot of autonomy within how towns can operate relative to state government, and that's really important to note. There's four commonwealths in the entire country. And, you know, some of those things, sometimes it can be really frustrating because every town has its own set of planning regulations and, you know, bylaws and whatnot. And, you know, I know James probably deals with that all the time, right? But, you know, there's also empowerment in that. And so I know, you know, public health officials, the Board of Health, I had asked Desi, "What's the guideline as of right now for graduations?" You know, "Are you going to put something out?" And they said, "No, it's up to the Board of Health." That's a tremendous amount of power. So, you know, having the towns think of this stuff through is really important, as you guys have already done for the last two weeks, which is good. A few things I do want to mention that I didn't before that I think are really important. There are 20,000 touchpoints a day fielded by about 800 people at the Division of Unemployment Assistance. That is not inclusive of the pandemic unemployment assistance. So that is 100,000 calls being fielded per week. And if someone who might be listening to this live needs help and finds themselves where they've been laid off, they need to call Mike or I as soon as they can. You know, I'm 617-722-1420, 617-722-1420. There is a delay. And they've gone from having 56 employees at DUA to going up to about 800 and they're trying to get it up to 1,000. They've repurposed state employees who don't necessarily do this for their job to make the calls back and to get the systems operating so that they can service the most amount of people. But there is a lag time and Mike and I are able to sometimes expedite the process, which is really important for those people who might be going through this and we're happy to take your call, we're happy to help and try to expedite this in any way possible. But there's a lot of calls coming in and they're having a hard time dealing with it, so where we can augment and assist, please let us know.
I'll just add that from a P, and there's also self-employment 1099 gig workers, part-time workers, et cetera, that got laid off. So there's a PUA segment to that and that needs a little bit of guidance. And he, the Senator gave a number, I'll give you, if you go to mikesoder.com and fill out the submission form, it comes directly into our office and it gives you an opportunity to kind of spell everything out. The one thing I would say if the public is listening, save a lot of time here, if you listen very carefully, if the public is listening and you need help. We need, the Senator and I need a couple of things to really help our team navigate through these things and it helps expedite so we don't have to go back and forth. If you file the claim and you got a claim number, but you're still pending, we need the claim number, the employer, the employer's address, and those come off of your pay stubs, date of birth, your address, and the best contact numbers. If you get us that information when you're ready, either call the Senator's office or reach out to our office, that saves us plenty of time where Eric, my office can can go right with that information, right to DUA or UI, and there's a big difference in. You know, actually just kind of throw out there, either, I know you guys do your weekly daily updates and stuff. We can, Senator or myself, we could try to come on another day on one of those, just because I know the public watches that also, so. And we'll help you navigate. So Michael, I think, you know, I think we answered that question, but if we didn't, you know.
No, you did, Mike. I just, I guess I would put to the point of, if you look at the population of Bellingham and multiplied it by six to get to the, everything we quote with the per 100,000 people, we are still at a fraction of the state. And as you, as you guys know, there's a Commonwealth, if we have the latitude to, if this drags on, if we have the latitude to help businesses, we need to do that because we are a small portion of the state that is not impacted like Haverhill and Lowell and Chelsea and everywhere else. That some of this is insanity because I think people are correctly wearing masks and everything else. But for people to be out of work when they could in this region, given the geography of the area, the, it's going to happen sooner rather than later. And if it doesn't happen by the governor and we have the latitude to do something, perhaps we're going to have to.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess I'd just say, you know, the one interesting thing about our areas is we're close to the Rhode Island border. Rhode Island seems to be having somewhat of a, of different numbers and so we're kind of on that spectrum of things. Again, I think we're going to get a clearer picture on this by the 18th. I know it's not something we all want to hear, hang in there a little bit longer. I know I keep saying that and I know it gets more and more frustrating, but hang in there with us a little bit longer. I think as we get to the 18th, I think this committee has priorities and things they're going to start working on. And I think the Senator and I will get a bigger picture of what's going on over the next few weeks here. And then kind of giving you guys direction. I would find it very hard to believe moving forward that they wouldn't give some guidance on how you can move forward on certain businesses. So, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you don't have the authority through the Board of Health to do certain things. So guidance and through the selectmen and the town administrator. So I, you know, I would be very, I think we're getting there, I think the governor hears it, he knows it. Let's just see over these next few weeks what progresses here, but I definitely would start getting your business plans together. I wouldn't hesitate on that and I know you've been doing it, but I just, I wouldn't hesitate. It's, I think it's something you need to start working towards so that you can see how those plans are going to fit. Because it's going to get hectic once things start really slowly gradually getting back, so.
I want to say to Mike because I think it's important, I think one of the biggest inhibitors to opening up the economy in a gradual fashion is a policy that was put in place that I don't agree with and that I am vigorously contesting, which is daycare being closed to June 29th. That to me is unacceptable and it needs to change if you're going to put people back to work. And so one thing that I would like to see happen that I know other people are advocating for, which I thought was going to happen on May 4th, was that essential list might expand a little bit into new considerations like the golf courses, like the groomers, like the florists, where they can do that social distancing. Obviously that didn't happen, but creating sort of this next step category of like necessary workers, which would be inclusive of teachers. And you know, I've heard from a lot of teachers right now that are having to teach their students while also having their own children at home, which is disastrous in many ways for remote learning. And so we, I know for a fact in my district, there's capacity for these emergency daycares to take more kids. You know, my daycare that our children go to alone has nine to 15 spots on any given day. And there's, there's capacity to send more children. And we do know that this doesn't affect children necessarily the way it does older people. You know, so that's just, that's one of the things that I've honed in on that we have a call with the governor on Tuesday, I believe at 11 o'clock. And we're going to have a long discussion about a lot of this stuff. So hopefully we'll be able to push in a respectful fashion. I don't envy the governor right now. I, you know, I know for a fact that there's a lot of people around him that are well intentioned, trying to make the right decisions. And one of the things I remind myself when I get frustrated is he's got public health people telling him that if he makes the wrong decision, 27,000 people could die from July to September and going to bed with that on your head at night. I just don't know how you do it, but we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we get this thing going in a responsible manner.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Mr. Connor, anything else? All right, Mr. Martinez, thoughts?
Hi, good morning, everyone. I come to this with very mixed emotions and the reason being that I have personal knowledge of, you know, like the hospitals. So I'll just give you a little quick story. My daughter-in-law is a nurse practitioner in a major hospital, actually it's more of a community hospital where she lives. And she is a director of scheduling for an orthopedic group and another surgical group. And I was, had to go down to their home on Thursday afternoon to help out because she's buried with how she's going to balance the schedule to keep people employed. These are nurses, these are health aides, et cetera, keep them employed while all the elective surgeries are not taking place. So this, this hospital she shared with me, and I'm not going to throw the name out there, is in really dire straits. They don't have nearly the cases of COVID that other hospitals do. Yet they, they, they have to shut down all their elective surgery. So I hear what Senator Fatman is saying in Rep. Soder. So it's challenging to see the number of people and they're doing the best they can to keep people employed, but she said they're going to have to start laying people off. And that's, that's difficult for hospitals. Then I look at my son who's built a small business as a physical therapist out of school, started his own business. And he had a thriving business, you know, opened five days a week, several hours for PTs. He's laid everybody off except for himself and he's seeing patients on Mondays and Fridays only as a result of people that he had to see because they were coming out of surgery. So I mean, his business has taken a major hit. So I really feel for these, these small businesses. And I, I'm looking forward to the point when they can begin to open up. But I have to also say that when I, when Mr. Spencer and I had a conversation about this, my, my initial reaction was if we go against the governor's orders, I'm really concerned about future mask works grants and other type of funding that they, he may just look and say, Bellingham gave me a hard time. Quite frankly, we're between a rock and a hard place. I don't want to go against the governor. I'm not saying I agree with the governor, but I think at this point, I'm just not in favor of going against the governor and then potentially losing out on mask works grants or other types of grants that could be coming our way or schools that we desperately know we need. So my opinion is I think we have to hang in there a little bit longer and come up with a viable plan for these other businesses in our town to get back to work. And once we review those, that their standard operating procedures maybe tweak them, suggest they do something a little differently, then we can start to open up these businesses as, as the governor allows us to open up these businesses. But I feel for them terribly. I'm not going to get into my own personal situation, but I'm in sales. My sales are zero and they'll be zero for the rest of the year. So I'm like a small business, it's impacting me too. So everyone's got to buckle down and it's tough. I don't have a dog, but for those folks that have a dog, I feel bad they can't go to a groomer. And I also think it's unfair for a floor shop can't sell flowers, but yet they have to. But you can walk into a Whole Foods or you can walk into, you know, Market Basket or any, and you can buy flowers. I mean, to me, it's ridiculous that a florist who could easily practice social distancing could make up a bouquet of flowers, leave them on the front door or deliver them to someone's home and leave them on the front door. If we can go pick up food at PJs, which we do frequently, we, I certainly should be able to go pick up some flowers for my wife. And I do feel that way. So I think I echo other board members' sentiments. But I, I'm, I gotta tell you, I just don't feel so that I'm, would be voting for going against governance orders to potentially hurt our town down the road. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mrs. McNulty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you start Cindy, I think Ryan, he has to take off, so he was just going to say bye. Thanks, Ryan, appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just before Cindy starts, let me just address one thing with Mr. Martinez said that, you know, I, I don't think it's so much about, you know, going against the governor and I would, I would just say to you that I don't think the governor is a vindictive person. He knows what's going on here. And I think what, I think what you guys can do and I think what you should kind of start doing, and I think you're doing it, is by doing a business plan and having people start coming to you and before you and starting the business, it's showing that you guys are starting to put formations together so that when this key starts getting turned on, you're giving people hope and a, and a means to the end on this thing. So I think if you can start doing that, I think that's the biggest piece. And I, and I don't disagree. There's, there's a lot of things in the, in the laws that are currently there, like Amazon can deliver flowers to your wife, but you can't have a certain florist do it because they don't fall under the guidelines.
That's kind of my point.
Yeah, it's kind of ridiculous. Yeah, it is, it is. But the, the one thing that I would say is, is pay attention to some of these e-commerce essential pieces. And I think a lot of florists, I think, are realizing through their legal teams that they have or their lawyers that they can actually fall under that e-commerce piece, so they might want to take a look at that piece of it. So that's where some of those things that you might want to take a look at. But I just wanted to just touch on that a little bit and I'll yield it back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. McNulty?
Okay, good morning, take two. I think to be respectful of the residents and the business owners that are on this call with us, I think the best thing we can convey is that we are here to advocate for you. It's not necessarily the timeframe we all want, but I think it's in our best interest, particularly Dan, with the Economic Subcommittee that we start proactively talking about the process so that the community knows that we're there, we're here to represent you as your elected officials and various board members. Because there's, there is so much conflicting information and, you know, getting back to the golf courses, you know, everyone around us is open. So you know, it doesn't mean we're not advocating for you or any of the small businesses. But I think the sooner we get in front of the community and let them know about this Subcommittee, which I know is part of our plan, I think the more confidence our town residents will feel that we're, we're here to support them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. McNulty. And I'm going to go to Mr. Biagi, before, before I go to Mr. Biagi, I just want to touch on as far as, and I know Rep. Soder was talking about the governor not being vindictive, I don't think that's the case. But I think there are businesses that we can open that do fall within somewhere in between essential and named non-essential by the governor and the board. And I think those are the ones we're going to be looking at. And Mr. Martinez, I don't think, you know, we open up a pet groomer. I don't think that's going to be shown as grandstanding as much as if, you know, I decided to, against the governor's order to stand on the first seat at a golf course and let's get a photo off of me standing up and
I, I don't think the news channels are going to be coming racing here because the pet groomers are opening up. And that wasn't my point. My, my point is that I, I don't want negative visibility because our numbers are good in this town. And you look at all, everything we've done, we're kind of leading the pack on, on preventing the spread, et cetera. With putting, you know, we're one of the first towns to require masks, et cetera. So I think we're leading the pack. I just don't want to be showing up on his desk someday thinking, oh, it's, do I go to Ashland or I go to? Well, Ashland complied all the way. I'm not saying he's a vindictive person, but he's human, okay? He's human.
Yeah, no, I get you. All right, Mr. Biagi?
Good morning. Encouraged to see the support we have from Rep. Soder and Senator Fatman on the state level. Obviously, you know, hearing, hearing the governor's orders, the moving of the goalposts on a consistent basis is frustrating as we see the economic impact to our community. I think with, with that latest date being thrown out of, of, of May 18th, I think we're ahead of the curve with our, the Economic Committee that's meeting to put business plans in place for plans on how to integrate and slowly come back to a sense of normalcy. What I, what I would like to see, I guess this would be directed to Rep. Soder, is that committee that Polito is leading as opposed to waiting till the 18th to hear what the next steps are? Because there's nothing more frustrating than the 18th comes and okay, now as you said, you know, now it's June 1st kind of thing. You never want to guess what's going to happen there. But almost like a trickle effect from that committee. So from this day forward up until the 18th, we see some kind of output coming from that committee on what the plans are, slowly taking essential, quote unquote, non-essential businesses and submitting plans about how they can open, I think will be very important for this to see. The, I know from community feedback I've received, it's that, that's where the frustration typically lies. It's, you, you wait for a date, you get to that date and the date, and the goalpost moves. So we need some kind of guidance at a leadership level from the state leadership on what the plans are going forward as opposed to waiting another two weeks to get some information. So I'd like to get your, your feedback from that, Mr. Soder.
Yep. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm having a problem with the video. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, we got you.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I think, I think one of the things that you're gonna, you're gonna see is, it is a frustration. It's a frustration with all of us because everybody's working towards that date, everybody's planning towards that date. And then we have a problem where we have to, you know, then we get to it and we're forming a committee and then we have to wait again. I firmly believe that, you know, I really thought long and hard about it. For my first thing was it didn't make sense to me what they were doing. But then I kind of thought about it a little bit more and the practical side of me comes out a little bit. And I am at that belief that I really think as these next few weeks come up, they're going to start moving forward on certain things and giving certain direction that they know there's certain things that they can move on for the 18th. And then there's certain things that they won't be able to. So I just can't imagine that they are going to wait until the 18th to do certain things. Come out with an announcement. I think as we did with the PU I think as we did with the PUA, which is the, you know, the pandemic unemployment assurance, they gave us a date of April 30th to roll out and they actually were a week earlier, a week and a half earlier on that. I'm not saying that it was perfect because we had so many people applying for it.
But it was something.
Yeah. But I really think this is the same situation. Look, and I am as disappointed as anybody when you look at the list. There's nobody on that committee from this part of the state. Doesn't have to be from Bellingham. It just, it would be, it would have been nice to have some people from this neck of the woods on that committee, even some business owners, you know. The smallest business owner he has on there is Davio's and I wouldn't necessarily call him a small business owner.
Yeah.
You know, but, uh, you know, I really thought long and hard about this and we are having a meeting with him on Tuesday, like the Senator said. He knows that he's going to get inundated with questions from us. But, you know, like the gov, like, like Senator said, I don't envy him in, in the sense that, you know, he has medical people in his ear telling him, you know, you make one, he's like on a, he's on a, he's on a balance beam. And you make one wrong move, you fall, you potentially go this way, it could be detrimental to all the hard work that we put forward. Look, I want to see things open up as much as everybody does. Everybody knows that. My sense of level of frustration with everything is, is been very public. And you guys know I don't hold back. And, but I'm also looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, we are looking at data that is moving in the right direction, not as fast as we like it to move in the right direction. You know, I'll just give you an example. I mean, you had not, just last week, you know, a, a nurse's son held a party with 40 kids in an apartment. You know, she's a nurse. You know, she's coming home every day. Everybody says, well, they're not contaminated, they're not this, they're not, you know, they don't have COVID. But she comes home from a hospital. We don't know the virus that's in that small apartment that that kid was having that party in. You know, so we got to be, you know, we out, we, you know, it's, it's, it's a combination of business ownership opening up, but also giving the sign of what's right, what's not right. You know, but I also feel, can you have a cookout today or tomorrow? Because it's beautiful and socially dissonant because we're adults and we're smart. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't. That is among you and the people that you associate with that you can do things. And I think we have to get some, back to some of that sense of normalcy. So I, I do think that the 18th is a date that I think we're going to start hearing some things. But again, that's purely just guessing on my part. But I do think that they are going to systematically, I think, try to work us back that way as long as the data doesn't change over the next couple of days.
Yeah, and this is where, to my point, I think this is where some trickled out updates would be very, very beneficial to kind of quell the frustration level that I'm feeling from our community specifically. But you can see just as a, as a nationwide, statewide level of frustration that, even a little news, even if that news is we're going to come out tomorrow with something, even if that news is we thought about it and this is how we're going to, this is what's going to happen. That's beneficial to the community. You're not going to agree with everything, but at least you're getting that news. I, I don't like the pushback. I, I, I've seen some of these governors' conferences where the, the, he, he's given non-answers. And, and then that, 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 that makes the frustration level even higher. So thanks, Mike, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Bob. You're welcome. So I know there's other folks out there in the spirit of expediency, though I'd like to kind of wrap this up here. Question for Jim. I know we were going to set up an email for the Economic Development Committee. Is that email set up yet?
Not yet, it should be set up Tuesday midday. So we'll send it out, but it, it likely is going to be covid19business@bellinghamma.org.
Okay.
Put Karen on spot here.
So what I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to wrap this up. I know there's a lot of, some business owners out there, some concerned residents. Appreciate you tuning in. But the sun is shining. My dog is begging for me to go outside and play ball and Mike just got me hankering for a burger. So if you guys have any questions, any follow-ups that didn't appear today, please email, make an email at covid19@bellinghamma.org. That's on our website too. That's for everything COVID-related. Again, we're going to have a separate one set up next week. But we can get those. Those questions will be then brought before the Economic Development Committee that meets Tuesday at 10:30 a.m. And those meetings are met, are done via Zoom as well. So if it's something you're available and you want to join, by all means. And then what I think I'd like to do is on Wednesday, when we do our televised update on ABMI 8, we can address those questions much like we do any, any health questions or other questions that are asked through that covid19@bellinghamma.org email. So that's where I'm at. Any of my colleagues have anything in closing?
I just want to thank you for organizing the meeting, Dan, thank you.
Appreciate it, most time again. It wouldn't be so bad, we could sit here and talk much longer if it was raining out, but I'm sure nobody wants to do that. So at this point, I will entertain. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second from Mr. Martinez. We have a second.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Hey, Bob, aye, don't spend too much money on that convertible.
I'll tell her.
Zero. Thank you very much, everyone, have a wonderful weekend.
You do the same.